Oh, so is that me? I didn't realize I was. Craig wasn't going to be here. Is that the case?
Yeah, that's the case. Sorry, Anne.
Okay, no problem. So what's the first step? Roll call?
Yes, roll call. Commissioner Tarek.
President.
Commissioner Haskell.
Here.
Vice Chair Koffsel.
Here.
And Commissioner Goulden and Chair Taylor will be absent this evening.
Great. So let's see. Public comments are the first thing, things that are not on the agenda. We'll take comments from the public, but we will not be able to act on any of the items, but glad to hear from people.
So we have a couple of hands up. We'll start with Betsy Morgan-Baylor.
Good evening, Chair Koffsel and fellow Chair Koffsel and fellow commissioners. Hello, and my comments tonight relate to the town's general rules to public comment. In particular, I want to cite one rule that that became the basis for a verbal agreement. A couple of you and several residents reached on February the 5th, 2020. That's a while ago, but just as a quick refresher, it was the most recent Planning Commission meeting at which the planning application was last in consideration. The rule I want to, that this agreement was based on was item seven of the general rules to public comment, and it reads, "Should a group of people wish to address the body on the same item as spokesperson may address the body and can use each group members three minutes up to a total of a half hour. Members of the public allotting their time must be in attendance at the meeting." So speaking to you this evening on behalf of a sizable group of residents who wish to honor the spirit of that rule, when at our next meeting, as I read on the development page, we will be considering, you will be considering the Neely Cup. We would like to present a cohesive, intelligent presentation and believe that the decision as to whether this is appropriate is within your purview. In deference to us, we would appreciate as much lead time as you're able to allow us and recognizing that it has been a while since February 2020, and we had that agreement. I just wanted to re-up it with enough lead time that you could get back to us. Thank you.
Sir, I didn't understand that. What lead time do you need?
If you, this, the rule to which I refer, which allows a bundling of three minutes up to a total of 30 minutes, it would be our intention to put together a cohesive 30-minute, I'm not sure about 30 minutes, but a cohesive, probably not 30 minutes in fact, but a cohesive presentation that would include PowerPoint or some kind of a presentation that would be visual as well as audible. And in order to do that, more lead time is helpful to learn at the last minute, whether it's up or down is awkward.
You mean when it's on the agenda? When, what day, what day it's on the agenda?
It's on the agenda, it's on the agenda for November 3rd at your next meeting. As I, you haven't put out the agenda yet, but on the development page where Planning has posted various important projects to the town, of which the Neely is one, it does appear that it will be at your next meeting on November 3rd. And anticipation of that, because this is the last time I will be able to see you. And I wanted to add, right, I won't see you again, you won't hear from me again until November 3rd. That would be too late to put together the presentation that we'd like to do. And since we, since we spoke about it on February the 5th, 2020, and it seemed perfectly fine, in fact, it was your suggestion that we approach it this way. We were asking for some kind of a means to be more collective and considered, and this was one of your, and I wish I could remember which one of you, but this was your suggestion, and we said, great.
Would you like me to speak to that through the vice chair?
Yeah, great.
Staff presented, here, let me do this. So at that time, staff presented a public speaking policy that to align with the council's public speaking policy that they had just adopted. The Planning Commission, after discussion, elected not to adopt that policy. So that policy is not in effect at this time to be able to combine the speakers' times.
So what, that means that the November 3rd meeting will only allow people to speak for the two or three minutes? And people have to just take the two or three minutes, not do the combination thing? Is that what you're saying?
Laura? Yes, that would be our interpretation. We received a similar request for the ASCC meeting, and at the ASCC meeting, you know, we determined since there was not a policy in effect that we should go with the existing policy of that body, which was to take individual three-minute comments.
Laura, through the chair. I don't recall us affirmatively saying that would not be possible. So I don't personally recall, like, we didn't adopt the policy, but I don't know that we said it would not be possible to combine. So is it appropriate for you to check with, I don't know if Craig will be back, or whether it's Anne offline, and get back to Betsy and, you know, give some guidance, because it's fair for them to ask to be able to prepare appropriately?
Certainly, we'd be happy to do that. So Betsy, we'll be in touch with you after I confer with the chair when he's back.
So I'm sorry, this is Nicholas. Will Craig be back timely to be able to to consult and to be able to get back with Betsy and her compatriots?
I believe he will. So I'll double-check the dates, and if it's not going to be timely, then I'll work with the vice chair.
Sounds good.
That sounds. And needless to say, from my perspective, Madam Vice Chair, you have my proxy to do what's right in terms of how the meeting should be conducted.
Thank you. Sounds good. Okay, great. So Betsy and Laura will work together and then either confer with Craig or me in enough time so that Betsy and other people can prepare their materials. Okay, for November 3rd. Okay, thanks, Betsy.
Okay, we'll continue with the oral communications. We have Bob Tierkopf.
Hi, thank you. I have no connection whatsoever to what Betsy was suggesting, but you know, one of my sort of general concerns as I've been involved with the processes of the town is my, my view is that anything that will enhance the quality of communication should be pursued. And if you have a choice between 10 people speaking three minutes disjointly versus a coherent presentation with PowerPoint, seems to me it's very obvious which option, you know, leads to the higher, highest caliber of information sharing. And I don't know why the Planning Commission wouldn't have the discretion to allow that. Seems to me like a very reasonable thing, and it seems like it should be the default approach. Anyway, that's not why I rose my hand or raised my hand. I raised it, I had a question in the comment. My question was, I submitted a letter to the Town Council on the 13th and asked that it be passed to the Planning Commission, and I don't see it included in the public agenda packet. And I'm wondering what the process or the policy is to present publicly communications that are received from the residents. And this, again, is along the same theme of enhancing communication, enhancing dialogue and exchange of information. And so I'm wondering, does it appear publicly anywhere or anywhere, or is it only via a PRA request that people find out what their fellow residents are communicating?
Would you like me to speak to that?
Thank you, Laura. Yes, that'd be great.
So the Planning Commission has not in the past had a system to receive like a communications digest the way that the council does. So communications are typically passed on to the Planning Commission based on individual projects that they're reviewing and public comments on those projects. So we need to confer with the chair and see, you know, what he would like to do with those types of comments that are addressed generally to the Planning Commission as opposed to on any individual project. So we do not have a process for that at this time.
Okay, if it did pertain to an individual project, would it appear in the agenda packet, or what would happen then?
Yeah, if it's a comment for an individual project that was received before the packet was published, then that would go out to the Planning Commission. And if it comes after the packet is published, then that's usually distributed to the Planning Commission in the form of an email in the afternoon of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. I did have a comment. I've got a timer running here that says 2 minutes and 40 seconds, so I will, I will defer it. It's painful, but in the interest of time, I'll save that for later. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Marcin.
Good evening. My name is Marcin Pavoski. First, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I would like to ask about giving the residents better access to the materials concerning Spring Ridge Cup. The materials published on the town's project page are missing 20 months of letters from residents. Letters sent from February 2020 until middle of September 2021 are missing. They cannot be found in any of the minutes, agendas, or public comment sections. We have brought up this topic during the ASCC meeting concerning the Spring Ridge Cup, but the situation has not improved so far. We're unsure if these letters will be attached to the agenda for the Planning Commission meeting concerning the cup. Even if they are, given that agenda is usually published just five days before Planning Commission meeting, the public will have very limited time to learn about 20 months of materials. Contrary to what we have been told at the ASCC meeting, many members of the public read and analyze the provided materials thoroughly. We would really appreciate making that possible. At the same time, I really wanted to thank town staff for creating the Spring Ridge Project page on the town's website and referencing the previous Planning Commission meetings concerning the project. If possible, a small suggestion, I think we're missing one meeting, February 5th, 2020, in the previous meeting section. Thank you very much.
Right. Do you have anything, Laura, to add to that, or shall we go on?
We're missing from the ASCC pocket at least one letter. So our IT staff is doing a search right now of previous emails to make sure that we've captured all of those. So we'll be reviewing those, and if we missed any comments, be including those in the pocket for the Planning Commission.
Okay, when, when that topic comes up to our commission?
Yes, yes.
Right, okay, good.
Okay, next commenter is a phone number ending in 7562.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Britangan. Thank you very much. I just want to reiterate the comments that was made by the previous residents. We need to have better communication, and we need to ensure that all our public comments are being publicized on the webpage. We have addressed this several times, and I don't see why this is not possible. I also wanted to comment on Laura. Laura, we always have been able to communicate with the Planning Commission. In way in the past, we could even address it to each member individually, and then it became just the chair, and now it's through Dylan or through you. But this is something that we have requested, since we are a community built on residents, and we would like to continue that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Caroline. Okay, see, I don't, oh, no, one more. Go ahead. Laura, do you want to call on him?
Yes, Laura, go ahead.
Hi, I would thank you for allowing me to voice, to voice my thoughts. So actually, there are at least nine letters missing from those 20 months, and that was the only comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thanks.
Laura, through the chair, if I might suggest that the people who feel something's missing may contact Laura Russell and provide a list of what they think is missing? Does that make sense, Laura?
Yes, that would be very helpful. I mean, I am not aware of that many things missing. I'm only aware of one thing that's missing. I certainly want to forward all those comments to the Planning Commission. So, you know, we're trying to circle back and make sure we've collected all of them, but residents, members of the public, if you're aware of those, please let me know, so we can follow up on it. We'd really appreciate it.
Great.
Mary Hefte has her hand up. There you go, Mary.
I'm sorry, I have a little background noise, but I just wanted to say that it, like Bob, I find it interesting that we would say that it's more efficient for people to talk in three-minute intervals than to have a bunch, a real presentation. That's a conglomeration of their opinions. It gives you one chance to actually, rather than having each of us say how wonderful it is, that you're giving us a chance to talk, it gives you some substance to your, to the presentations. It just seems like a no-brainer. So I'd say, when you're responding, please tell us why we, why this rule has been changed.
Laura Russell, or Anne, is it okay if I ask Laura a question to clarify separately?
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, I, I think if you could direct people to what was actually said at that meeting, I think we did not adopt the strict policy that had been preferred, proffered, but I thought that we were allowing the chair to have discretion on, you know, how those types of combined comments might be run. So I think what we were saying, and Laura Russell's going to have to go back and clarify what was said at the time, but I think it, based on what I recall, it's Craig or Anne that would set the, the mechanism for allowing that as opposed to it not being allowed. I think there's discretion that's allowed, but Laura Russell, I defer to you on what was actually said at the time.
We'll certainly follow up within minutes and make sure we understand that and review with the chair or the vice chair.
Thanks, Jude.
Thank you. Betsy has her hand up, but she's already spoken. Did you want me to allow her to speak one more time, just in case, Anne, or?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the second opportunity, just to say that, as I hear our opportunity to ask for specific letters that we know have been omitted, the awkwardness of that is, that which I know has been omitted, I have accessed previously. I have ideas of, there are 20 months of letters that have been omitted. I know of 10 that I could ask for specifically. It's the ones I don't know about that I'm most interested in receiving. So it's not, the framing of that question puts the responsibility on me to know what's missing. I would rather ask the town to be forthcoming with letters of public record. I think that's the way that we have operated always. I would like to operate like that in this case as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Betsy. Okay, I don't see any more public comments. So we'll go to the agendized item, the review of grading in excess of 1,000 cubic yards associated with a new residence at 857 Westridge. Presume there's a staff report.
All right, I'll go ahead and share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair and members of the Commission. So this item before you is a site development review for grading in excess of 1,000 cubic yards, which is associated with a previously approved new residence. And so just to start, I just wanted to give some background so we can orient ourselves. So the subject property is a 2.86-acre lot that's on Westridge Drive, on the southerly part of Westridge Drive, easterly of Meadowwood. There is an existing 5,068-square-foot residence and a 675-square-foot detached garage. Both are being proposed for demolition. And so the original project that was approved by ASCC in February of 2020 consists of a new 6,726-square-foot, single-story residence with an attached four-car garage and with associated site improvements. And so now staff wanted to turn to kind of a timeline of how we got to tonight's meeting. So in June of 2019, the town received the Architectural and Site Development Review permit applications for the original project. Subsequently, in February of 2020, ASCC approved the project. And then in January 2021, the applicant informed staff that grading revisions were necessary, depend, based on the project scope of work. And then six months in between that, so from January to June roughly, the staff and applicant we met to discuss the revisions, determine what the actual numbers were. And so the final determinations we made through those discussions were the three items, three following items, that the grading revisions did require a new site development permit application to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, given the town code requires the Planning Commission to review any grading in excess of 1,000 cubic yards. That the, so during that process, the town would also allow a building permit submittal of the original project with those revisions and provide first round comments. So the applicant would be aware of any other revisions or corrections that needed to be made, and more importantly, to have the town geologist and the town engineer review the project through that building permit submittal. And then lastly, that after the first round of comments were provided to the applicant by staff, that a, the new site development permit would follow shortly after. And so just kind of going back to the timeline, so in June of this year, the applicant submitted those building permits with the revisions, and staff provided those comments within, with, in July. And then in September, so last month, the application was submitted to the department for review, the item that we're reviewing tonight. And so now I'm just going to jump into those grading quantities and those revisions. And so the top portion of the screen describes the original grading quantities. As you'll note on the right-hand side, so the town has an equation that determines what cubic yardage is eligible for site development permit review. And so on the right-hand side, you'll see this equation spelled out. And so I'll just, I'll kind of just highlight the center, the center part. So we typically look at building pad fill, a site work cut, which is the cut that is outside of the building pad, and then also site work fill. And so that would be subject to site development permit review and the associated level of review. So in the original proposal, the cumulative was 770 cubic yards, which is below 1,000 and above 100. So per town code, the required level review originally was ASCC. So the ASCC reviewed not only the architectural review, but the site development permit concurrently and approved both. With the proposed revisions, we now have a cumulative of 1,328. So this is in excess of 1,000. So therefore, this requires new review from the Planning Commission in order to approve. And so in analysis of this proposal, the town staff took three items into consideration. The first was the applicant's justification letter and exhibits, which are attachment five and six of the staff report. So the first, the two items that were highlighted as reasons for the additional grading were to restore that natural, natural topography, particularly in the areas where that existing garage, the detached garage and driveway areas, those would be demolished and then subsequently filled in to restore natural topography. And then also the architectural program of the new residents, the, the project team wanted to ensure that the entire program had the same floor elevation, particularly within the master suite and garage areas. So there would be an additional two-foot elevation rise, which would equate to a fill to ensure that that is the same floor elevation throughout that program. And then the two other components, as I mentioned before, the town geologist and the town engineer, as customary for building permit submittals, reviewed those revisions through the building permit submittal. And the town geologist did approve the revisions, subject to one additional condition, which staff included as that recommended condition three, which is exhibit A of the draft resolution. And then the town engineer, in their review, they did have comments and resubmittal requirements for the project at large. However, they didn't provide any comments related to the revised grading, and they were provided the updated geotechnical report. And so in that, staff concluded that the town engineer did not object to those proposed revisions. Otherwise, there would have been comments there, too. And staff just wanted to note that the applicant, the applicant's team is here, and if there are any questions or any necessary drilling down of the technical details, I would defer to them in terms of the more elaborate justifications for the two items that I mentioned previously. I just truncated it for time's sake. And so now, switching gears to discuss, so the, the town code has six findings related to site development review. And so I'm just going to kind of go through each finding briefly, just to walk us through what are the requirements, since we, we very infrequently have a standalone site development permit be reviewed by Planning Commission, at least in my experience. So the first finding essentially is just to minimize the problems of drainage, erosion, earth movement, and similar hazards, as well as visually unpleasant relationships. And so in staff's analysis, we concluded that those, the proposed grading intends to restore the areas of the site that were previously excavated, back to a more natural topography of the site. And so turning to the second finding, it's the same as the first one in terms of erosion and hazards of earth movement or faulty drainage, but it relates to the public lands and places, watercourses, streets, and all other lands in town. And so staff's analysis and conclusion that this finding could be made is that the proposed grading doesn't create any additional erosion. It minimizes the hazards of earth movement, and that's based on the town geology, town geologists' recommendations, as detailed in their revised report. And then the site, the original site was constructed with adequate drainage, and that will be carried forward with the, the project. So no, no changes are being proposed for the adequate, for the drainage. And so turning to plan, finding number three. And so this just speaks to the planning design and the construction of the project to provide maximum safety and human enjoyment while making it as unobtrusive in the natural terrain as possible. And so just going back to the grading intending to restore that natural topography, and then also that elevation of the program to have the same elevation throughout the whole program. and then also that elevation of the program to have the same elevation throughout the whole program, that is designed to minimize the additional height or massing of the single-story residence proposed. And so finding four, just talked about the minimum minimizing fire hazards and maximum retention of natural vegetation for erosion protection, earth movement, and other similar hazards to preserve the natural scenic qualities of the town. And so in staff's analysis of this finding, the grading and the resultant topography will actually provide additional planting areas. So those planting areas will increase protection against erosion, earth, earth movement, and other similar hazards. And then these additional areas should result in preservation, both of the site and the town overall, the scenic qualities. And so turning to finding number five, just talks about protecting significant trees to retain, to retain as many trees as possible on site. And the proposed grading will, it requires protection of the significant trees on site. That's a standard practice for the project, and it was previously approved, the chief protection program. And it's really only concentrated in areas where structures currently exist. So no trees are, no new trees are anticipated for removal with this revised grading. And then lastly, the planning, design, and construction is consistent with the general plan, any specific plans, and then Title 18, which is just the zoning code of the town. And staff concluded that this new residence that was previously approved, and these current grading revisions are consistent with the town's general plan and the zone code. So now turning just to public comments, so we didn't mail notices on October 8th to neighbors within a 300-foot radius of the subject property. We did not receive any comments prior to packet distribution. However, we did receive one comment today, which was forwarded to the commission. And those comments did center around grading quantities and HOA approval of the project. Staff wanted to note that there was an email exchange between staff and the commenter related to these questions, since they were more project and process related. And so we did attempt to address the questions, and we conclude that we answered the question satisfactorily. However, we wanted to provide the comments to the commission, just as normal process with any other comment. And so turning to staff's conclusion and recommendation for the grading revisions. So staff is concluding that the project, the grading revisions do comply with the town code requirements as detailed in those six findings that we discussed. The project is categorically exempt from CEQA because it is coupled with the originally approved single-family residence that the ASCC approved in February of 2020. And so staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution, which is Attachment 1 of your staff report, to approve the site development permit, subject to the recommended conditions of approval, which are detailed in Exhibit A of that resolution. And with that, we're happy to take any questions or comments or turn it over to the project team if there are any pressing technical detail questions that staff is unable to answer. Thank you.
Sounds great. So our process then will be, the commissioners will ask questions of staff or the project team, and then we'll open it to public comments on this project, and then we'll deliberate. So let me see if Judith or Nicholas have questions for the staff.
Um, I do, and it's derived from the public comment that was provided this afternoon, which I hadn't had really much chance to look at. So I would ask the staff to comment on the relationship between our review and the West Ridge Architectural Supervising Committee. This commenter seems to think that the WASC approval or consideration of an approval needs to go first. And I think clarifying for the record how that works, if that's a relevant process, would be helpful.
I'd be happy to speak to that. So.
If I may, if that point, if I may also join Commissioner Hasko, if you could also clarify what the current status of the WASC Architectural Committee is as well. That would be helpful. Thank you. I'm sorry for interrupting.
Okay, let me start with that one. I do not know the status of the WASC Architectural Committee at this time. I know that they had reorganized and some different people had become involved. So I don't know the status of their review board or how their reviews are going at this time. I can speak to generally the relationship between the town process and an HOA process, so not just for WASC, but for any HOA. As you know, we have several really active HOAs in the community. So when people apply for projects with us, a number of our forums remind them to check in with their HOA. Staff tries to routinely remind people that they need HOA approval for their projects. We strongly encourage people to apply to their HOA before they apply to the town so that we don't end up with the situation where the town approves something and the HOA is not able to approve it, for whatever reason. And then it ends up coming back to one of our decision-making bodies. So we definitely have a shared interest in having HOA approval in advance. But we've conferred with the town attorney, and legally, we do not hold up applications to the town to get that HOA approval. So all, we strongly suggest it, we really encourage people to do it, but they are not legally obligated to. So we are required to give them their due process and process their application in a normal, timely fashion. So there have been a couple of cases where an HOA approval has not come before the town's approval. I'm not even familiar with one case where we issued the building permit before the HOA approval was finalized. But we do think that that's consistent with the town attorney's guidance on the proper procedures. It, it is hard to sometimes separate the HOA's role and the town's role. And several of the HOAs in town have rules that are very similar to the town's rules. And so it can be easy to conflate the different requirements. So it's fairly often that we do have to explain to members of the public or even members of the HOA boards that it's not the town's role to enforce their CCNRs or their design requirements. So we ask people to go through that process, but we ourselves, the town, does, does not enforce their CCNRs. So sometimes there's overlaps, sometimes there's a slight difference of opinion, and so that has come up in the past. But we've been trying to work with the HOAs to rectify some of those issues.
So a follow-on, and then I'm done. So if the applicant were to receive approvals, or, or were to approve the resolution proposed, they're at risk that WASC has different views on how to comply with the CCNRs. So they're just operating at risk, in a sense, Laura, is that right?
They are operating at risk. I think we just lost Anne.
Oh, no. Okay.
Oh, we need to pause the official meeting. We do not have a quorum at this moment. So let's hold on a second and see if she can rejoin. I'll just make sure she's not trying to reach. So for any members of the public, we're required to have three planning commissioners present to have a quorum. So we just need to wait for Anne, and it looks like she is signing back in.
Oh, hi, you all. Sorry about that. Can you hear me? My computer died. I had to log in on my iPad. Tell me what happened.
Okay, great. Glad you're back. So Commissioner Hasko was just asking a question. And I think it'd be best officially if you would re-ask that question so that we can have that in the record.
Sure. My, my question was, even if the planning commission were to adopt the proposed resolutions, that as a result of what you described, the relationship between the WASC review process and our review process, the applicant is essentially operating at risk. Should the WASC find that the CCNRs had different requirements? May or may not mean that they need to come back, but that they may still have issues to resolve with WASC, regardless of our decision.
And that's correct. They are, in, in effect, operating at risk because they have a separate legal arrangement with the HOA, separate town requirements.
Laurie, if I could speak just for a second with that, this is Justin Alexander with A&E Architects, principal in charge with the project. We've tried to communicate with them even prior to the ASCC, you know, presentation. We've sent drawings, we've tried to communicate with them at great length without very little response. And even as of three weeks ago, I printed out drawings for them. As of Monday, they hadn't even picked up the drawings from the print shop to review the project. So I'm entirely sure how we can better communicate with them as far as this project and reviewing it to get approval. But, you know, we have tried to communicate with them at great length to get approval for the project. And I feel very comfortable that we are meeting every guidelines that they have.
This is Nicholas, and to the extent that the applicant understands what the that WASC may have views, which may be different than those, the, than the town. And given the unclear status of WASC in the first instance, I'd suggest that we simply proceed. And the private parties will make the appropriate decisions that they will need to make and recognize that we may well see this matter again in the event that that's a necessity. But I believe that the matter is properly before us at this point. And it may be worth noting that we should evaluate the coordination as as part of the decision-making process in advance of getting to this point. But I think that the matter is properly here.
Great. Judith, did you have more comments or questions of the staff and the project managers?
No, I did not.
Okay. How about you, Nicholas? Do you have questions?
I do not.
Okay. I had just a couple. Tell me again, so this went before the ASCC quite a long time ago, and they approved it. How did it come to pass that, I mean, the ASCC's sort of final project, that then later there was a big revision such that the land movement became bigger? What changed? After, it seemed like final drawings, can I say?
Justin, do you want to take the lead on that in terms of what happened between the original approval and the revisions that you noted in your exhibits?
Sure. Is there a way, Dylan, that you could bring up that exhibit, the site plan exhibit that I had? Or I can share? Is it okay if I share?
Yeah, I believe you have the, the ability to share. If you're having any issues, I'll bring it up while you're trying to attempt. So just give me a moment.
Here, I think I can share my. So really, the, the biggest issue or the, the biggest change, I would say, is really revolving around this garage right here. And the garage, the existing garage is currently basically dug into the hillside, all the way up, really to the eve line, with I show an image up above here. Sorry.
Yeah, we're not seeing the drawings, but I'm understanding.
Oh, you're not? Oh.
But I'm understanding your description, but.
I'm.
In the middle of the screen, do you see the green share screen? There you go.
Yeah. Do you guys see it now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So this cyan area right here is the the existing garage, and it's, it's basically dug inside. And that in, in this image up above, boy, my computer is quite slow. So you can see it, it's, it's dug basically into the eve line. It, it this, it's very large embankment for the drive. And in the original scheme, as we had the guest units design, we actually had some retaining walls that were retaining this earth with a, you know, a structural wall, in the sense that we weren't going over this fill, or, you know, cut and fill cubic yardage, where really, when we came down to it, it's like, we've got to repair this kind of wounded earth. We've got to repair this hillside from the previous garage being excavated out, and really, that's going to make, you know, a better environment for these guest units to sit. But also, you know, it brings back to the natural topography of the earth. That's really where it's kicked us over that thousand yards. And we feel at this juncture that it's just better to come in front of you guys to, to discuss this instead of having these retainage walls that it was really, at, at the previous design, it was going to be two separate retaining walls that basically up as terraces, let's say, and added cost to the project, et cetera. So I, I think that, that is really the design move that did over the 1,000 cubic yards.
I see. So this is a revision. Does it have to go back to the ASCC with the new retaining wall garage structure?
Um, the, the grading is in the planning commission's purview, and the change to the retaining wall, we consider to be minor enough to be within the director's authority, within my authority to change. We have had conversations with them though about some landscaping changes, so there may be some elements of the project that will go back to ASCC for revision.
I see. Okay. No, thank you. Yeah, so I get it. Just when you think harder about projects, some things change, and this is one of them. Okay. That's all my questions. Okay, we'll open it up to public comments. So if people have comments specific to this project, we'd love to hear them.
But Justin, if you would stop sharing your screen at this time.
Oh, sure.
Be great. Thank you.
Great. Shall I call on people? I think I see Mary Huffey has her hand up.
Okay, there you go, Mary.
Hi. Yeah, I'm on the Woodside Arthur, I mean, on the West Ridge Architectural Supervisory Committee. And as you know, it's an older organization than the town of Portola Valley. It began its work on doing architectural supervisory for our community many years ago. And we do meet monthly. We too have problems with staffing. We do have problems with COVID. We do have problems with communication. I know we reach out regularly. Patty Deuce is in the hospital right now. All this business about how we're not reachable is interesting. We tried desperately hard to get written plans. I don't at all blame Justin. I think this started well before my tenure. And I understand that none of us are, are the most efficient human beings in this time that in the world. But we are doing our best, and I think it greatly serves the client, in this case, to get clear with their community. And, and we've, we've had time and again, this coming up. I went, I was on the, the committee 30 years ago, and even then, there seemed to have been some reticence about the town turning around and saying, yeah, we want, Mary, hey, I'm here. We need to get this, these papers back by this date, you know. Mary, hey, I'm here. Uh, we need to get this, these papers back by this date, you know, because unfortunately, we don't necessarily follow all the planning commission meetings and the schedule and so forth and don't know when it's coming up. Anyway, imagine my three minutes is almost up. Uh, and I uh will do my very best to find out more about this detail. It came up as a complete surprise. It was coming up today. So, you know, that's that's what kind of communication we're up against. Uh, we do have a public uh uh we do have a public uh elections. We do have uh, we do have a a website and you can reach us at any time on that website, just Justin.
All I uh just to comment, I we've tried to communicate and and I have been communicating. I don't recall that specific person right off the top of my head, but
There you go.
In in getting you guys plans, um as of even three weeks ago, I printed out plans for them and communicated with them to go pick it up. And as of Monday, uh I contacted the print shop and uh they, nobody had picked them up yet. So I am absolutely happy to to any information that you need, discuss the design with you at any point in time. And uh I do believe that it meets all of your uh requirements and regulations. And so anytime uh you guys have a meeting, um I'm happy to reach out tomorrow uh even to
Yeah, I, yeah, I'll look for it. Great. Um, I I I maybe I could just get your information and I can make sure about this find out where where the communications are breaking down. I do notice some communication breakdown uh all around me, tell you the truth. And uh it's not just here, uh it's all around us right now. And I think we all need to be um kind.
Great, but that's great, Mary. If you can um help get it moving um and work with Justin.
Justin, um I I really don't know too much about the setbacks. I was just looking at the setbacks on your plans that you just put up. How are you doing with the setbacks and do they meet our criteria?
Oh, they they meet your criteria.
Great. That's, you know, I think, I think we probably think we've already approved this, but I could be wrong. I'll let you know.
Good. Thanks, Mary. Um, I don't see any more public comments. If anybody has one, put their hand up. Um, okay, so we'll bring it back to the uh planning commission for discussion. I start with Judith or Nicholas uh to give comments on the project.
Well, I I I guess I can start. Um yeah, we we certainly like to encourage people to minimize fill and cut so that the burns on the infrastructure are, you know, not not too great. In this particular instance, there are some factors that help me get comfortable. This is an appropriate um sized project. One is they're trying to restore some of the natural land features. Um, I think once there's a disturbance, it's hard to go back. Um, but but it is important to me that um, you know, that that's a good goal. Uh, the the geotech analysis, um it is hard to actually know how to interpret a lack of negative comment uh as being support, but I didn't see anything in here that that indicated a material issue. I might have missed something, but um for me, um, you know, trying to keep as much on site as possible is uh would make sense. I think the being aware of the the importation of uh invasive uh non-native invasives is uh something, but it's to keep in mind, but that's part of the resolution. So overall, I'm fairly comfortable with this.
Great. Thanks. Nicholas, do you wanna go?
Yeah, I I concur. Uh, this is a um you know, in in a certain sense, this as much as a restoration uh project as it is uh a cut and fill project. Uh, and in as much as the remediating uh uh a site that may be in need of some help, I I think that this uh project uh certainly meets the uh meets the required findings and stands as a a good example of when uh additional uh latitude should be uh afforded. Certainly, the issues of invasive species associated with um uh leaving additional or uh cut material on site rather than taking it off site is something that should be evaluated. And Judith uh noted that are the issues of invasives and uh uh native planting uh are addressed. So with that, I have no further uh comments.
Great. Thanks, Nicholas. And I agree with my fellow commissioners. It seems like this is reasonable and the remediation feature helps um make me more in favor of it, and I felt like it meets the findings.
Now, if I can also just add for a moment uh that the exchange between uh the project architect and uh the head of the uh WASC was uh heartening. And is that kind of uh open exchange in real time that we rarely get to see? Uh, but you see the spirit of cooperation uh and efforts to reach resolution uh are are positive and and felt compelled to to note this.
Very good. Yes. Good to have these meetings to all come together and find each other. So I think that's, we're done with our discussion. Shall we have a motion on the resolution that was included in our packet?
I'll move to adopt the resolution uh set out on attachment one.
A second.
Okay, great. And Laura, am I right? We can go straight to a vote. We don't need, we don't do public comments after the motion. Is that right?
Correct. You've already had public comments and we should have a roll call vote.
Okay, sounds good.
So Commissioner Haskell?
Hi.
Commissioner Targ?
Hi.
Vice Chair Koff.
Hi.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Uh, let me get my agenda up here. Um, next is commission reports. Um, Nicholas and I have one. We're on the ad hoc housing elements committee and met um this past Monday. So reviewed a few things and for me, the most interesting, the staff, um, you know, we can meet our um numbers, this goal of uh the housing units that Portola Valley has been assigned, two hundred and fifty-three, which is ambitious. Um, we can meet it through um ADUs and affiliated housing, uh which there's projects, but then what was new is staff looked at rezoning. Um, they had five areas of town. They might, uh we could consider rezoning and how many units that might, each of those areas might uh produce. So that was interesting and definitely gives us something to think about. So um, that's the report that I have on the uh housing element. Uh, anybody else, Nicholas or Judith?
I'd only join uh and with what you said in that issues of traffic, fire, uh seismic uh were issues that were also raised in the course of discussion. Uh, and uh there's a recognition in part, we'll have a discussion of that today uh on the effects uh uh of the new housing legislation and what impact that may have on our ability to meet the numbers and uh and in what ways.
Might I ask one of you to comment on next steps or for that commission or ad hoc committee, whatever the right designation is?
I would uh, but I'm sorry. Please, please go ahead, Chair.
No, I was gonna defer to Laura. She had the next step. It, we're still in the information collecting mode to get reports on, you know, fire and evacuation and many other things before we really start, I think, hashing out what um which options might be viable.
So the rezoning has not been evaluated substantively. That is on the table.
Yes, just the first pass at throwing some ideas out there. Yeah. But from where I sit, it's always good to have a few things on the table. Uh, you know, as I sit on this commission, uh I mean, it just seems like a very difficult, hard problem, right? I'm like, I don't know, like, I don't know, I can't see where we put things. This was, it's good to have something to look at, right? So for me, that was great. And they had a kind of a um system, the staff did for how to approach ideas and areas and think about the number of housing units a change might produce that feels nice and systematic to me.
And I don't know if it's appropriate, Laura, tell me to park this question. But on the last ad hoc committee, there was a proposal to have some units at the town center next to the, I think it's a soccer softball field. Is that part of this analysis as well?
Um, yes, we expect it to be. So we haven't brought that kind of detailed information in yet, but we will be at upcoming meetings.
Okay. And by the way, I see Dana has her hand raised. I defer to you all on appropriate protocol here. And others.
So uh for the vice chair, if the um commissioners are done giving their commission reports, then it would be appropriate to take public comment um on the commission reports.
Okay. And Judith and Nicholas, you were done with commission reports, right?
Yeah, I have nothing.
Okay, great. Yeah. So we'll talk uh hear from Dana and then from Rita.
Okay, here's Dana.
Unmute. Hi, you guys. Just a a quickie. You know, I I think I'm gonna be present in every meeting trying to show the people who are in the audience. I I think we need to go back to the schoolhouse if the people can't see each other and hear each other. I think it's transparency. It's important. And I have just dismayed meeting after meeting that we can't that that the residents who are in the meeting can't see each other and hear each other and have the ability to communicate. So I was hoping you could tell us how many people are in the meeting and maybe who is present. Thank you.
I wrote back to your chat and wrote everybody that's there. Did you not get it?
Oh, no. Um, I, the chat was disabled. Anytime someone chats, it's immediately disabled. So somebody else disabled the chat. So I was not able to see your response.
I see. Well, there's twelve people. Okay.
That doesn't do a whole lot, but it's better than nothing. But you know, the the residents are discouraged. The res- the residents are upset. I mean, we just, we have no ability to see what's going on in a meeting with the residents. So we're actually trying to set up something, some mechanism where the residents can see each other and communicate during a meeting. So, but I guess we're gonna have to do that independent of the town because the town somehow doesn't want us to see each other. Anyway.
Not, oh, well, I think it's the format that we're using. Um
We've been talking about this for a year and a half. So the people
And we've been talking to Zoom about it and they they won't change this for us. I'm sorry. We'd love to have you guys see each other. I apologize for that, but this is, we cannot do anything about it.
Maybe we need to find another way of doing it. And there are other ways apparently. So, you know, let's try to make it happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Uh, Rita?
Hi, I attended part of the meeting that happened on Monday and I just wanted noted. I I know that there aren't a whole lot of um minorities in this town. Uh, but the housing element is an important uh topic, important group. And even the person from Equity, there was no diversity. Perhaps there was some that I just didn't see, but there was, we're we're talking about housing, the change of housing. People use the word diversity and and affordable housing unfortunately was too much connected in the same same sentence as diversity. But there was no diversity on the screen. And I don't know what we can do to to do better. But we've got to somehow um do do better with this to bring other voices at the table. And I I know that there was a big search to get people for the housing element group. And there was a big search for the Equity group. But there's, there's got to be a way that we can uh still include other voices without the time commitment of the four hours for each of those meetings each time. Thank you for listening.
Great. And now we have a phone number that in seven, five, six, two.
Good evening. This is Caroline Briton. And again, thanks again. We really appreciate um you allowing us to share our comments. Um, in regards to the Zoom meetings, I apologize. I will reiterate it again. We attend so many Zoom meetings and for some reason, uh Portola Valley is so um I I cannot find the right word, but some committees are able to allow us to get into the chat rooms and others not. Um, why is it that the ad hoc uh housing element committee can provide us with a YouTube video so we can review it? But Equity, and by the way, it's not Equity and Race anymore. It now has been reduced to Equity. Um, cannot. Um, it it's really, this is not how we are. We are people who communicate. We try to uh find solutions uh among citizens. And and for somehow, you know, we get every explanation that is so contradictory to what we are. I cannot believe it, that I have to restate this again. Um, I I participate in so many Zoom meetings and I never have had this issue. So anyway, um, thank you, Dana, for the comments. Thank you, Rita, for the comments. Yes. Um, we will continue. We we have to come to a a resolution and um to to the commission uh to the members. Thank you for all your time. But perhaps we have to inform you about the changes and we have to give you a timeline. Um, because we have now established a timeline when we think this came to a change where instead of residents, it became something else. It was staff who needed to promote the agenda and to become something successfully. And I think that's where it changed. I think it's it's part in two thousand fifteen. And um we cannot blame the staff because they're fairly new. You know, we have a high turnover. But we can only hope that the commissioners who have been with us for so many years that they will um represent us and 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 continue to help us represent the values and um represent how special this town is. Because we're not Menlo Park, we're not Palo Alto, we're not even Woodside Park, uh Woodside. So we're very unique and we hope to establish that. So thank you very much.
Thanks. Any other public comments? I think we got them all. Great. Shall we move on to staff reports?
Laura? There's some someone named Leslie that has her hand up.
Oh, sorry. I missed that. Oh, yes. Hi, Leslie. Go ahead and talk or when you're unmuted.
Leslie, you need to unmute on your end.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. Um, I went to the traffic committee meeting regarding um the nearly issue last week and then three days later I went to the um uh Zoom meeting, both of them were Zoom meetings, um, where the ASCC was involved. And the, the exposure uh to the audience was completely different. My question is, why were those so different? Why could we see who the participants were at the traffic committee meeting, but three days later we couldn't see who the participants were at the ASCC meeting? Does something happen in those three days that I'm unaware?
Through the chair, would you like me to speak to that?
If you know something, yes, that'd be great, Laura.
Um, so generally speaking, the town's committees use one um part of the Zoom platform, and those are meetings where everyone can be seen on the screen. The town's council and our decision-making bodies, which is the planning commission and the ASCC, use this format, which is a webinar format. So the commissioners, the council liaisons, the staff are all um in the black boxes um and on the screen. And then the members of the public are attendees. And that's because we have to, you know, maintain the structure of the decision-making bodies um that take actions that have legal bearing. And the committees are advisory committees. And so a little bit more of a free form structure um was determined to be acceptable. The committees also, I think, weighed in on some of that in terms of how they wanted to run their meetings. And so some of them talked about going to a webinar format. And my understanding is that in general, they chose to stay with a meeting format.
Thanks, Laura. That's good. Oh, I see Christie Corley has her hand up. Go ahead.
Hey, i- i- if, if I, if I may.
Yes.
Uh, you know, this is a very important issue uh of how people communicate uh and how we engage together as a community and as a town. Uh, it is a field of what we're doing right here in this planning commission meeting. And I would suggest that this is a broader townwide meeting that might be more properly addressed, not before the planning commission, but either with staff or uh with the assistance of members of the council. Because we are not in a position to render any decision. And if I can bring our attention back to the fact that we are uh addressing issues of uh uh, of, of uh committee meetings. And this is important as to committee meetings as to process, but not as to substance or any particular meetings that we've participated in. Uh, and as such, I, I think that this is a broader townwide uh governance issue that probably has a more appropriate forum. I, and it's an important issue. It needs to be heard. Uh, as a planning commission and particularly as three members of the planning commission, uh, we are not in a position to address this. And I don't, uh, yeah, I, I don't think in this body, in this particular forum, we're doing service uh to either the agenda uh or to the important issues that are being raised right now. And perhaps it may be appropriate to have a recommendation made uh to council that these issues be addressed uh or considered before council. But I don't see that we're in a position to address them as a planning commission.
Certification, Nicholas? You mean council as in the town council as opposed to city or town council, the attorney, right?
Uh, yes, this is a CIL rather than SCL. I, I, I completely, I completely, you've got it right.
Thanks. Um, we'll continue with the public comments. Uh, Christie, then, then Barbara.
Thank you. I wanted to share a thought I have around um first and second readings and third readings and whatever. I think residents are not, I'm gonna speak for myself, but I assume there's some other residents that feel the same way. That a second reading is uh our, if I couldn't make the first meeting, I might be able to hear the second reading on something. So I'd appreciate it if you don't waive second readings because second readings on something you're presenting allow the public to listen again, to discuss again, to be involved again. So I am not for waiving a second reading uh at any time. And I'm not sure how the rest of the residents feel, but I think we need as many opportunities just to discuss things as possible. Thank you.
Through the chair, uh, planning director, do we have second readings be on uh planning commission resolutions? And uh when we're acting in the capacity as a zoning board of appeals?
No, there are not second readings. I think Christie was speaking to when the council adopts an ordinance. There's a first um reading, there's a first hearing, and then there's a second time that the council reviews it. And the language is used differently by different people. But when we're talking about waiving a reading, it's an old-fashioned requirement where people actually used to have to stand there and read the whole ordinance out loud. And so when the council waves the reading, they're just saying you don't have to stand there and read the ordinance out loud because we have it in the public record. So the council always reviews ordinances twice. The planning commission does not review ordinances. When the planning commission has a resolution in front of the body, um, they would act on it one time.
So thank you very much. That was my, uh, that was my thought as well. I would only reiterate my earlier point that uh the issues that we're addressing right now are very important issues, but are not planning commission issues and it is not appropriately agendized. And I would address to uh, to move forward.
Okay. Thanks. Uh, we have one more resident with her hand up. Barbara Seep.
Hello, thank you. I'm Barbara Seip and I appreciate your service. I have served on two town committees in the past as well as was a past former uh school board president. And I do understand all that you have to read and digest and, and go through. So I thank you for your service. I just want to emphasize that I think it's very valuable for us to think about going to more a meeting format rather than webinar format. I think the value of seeing one another uh in a public meeting setting as much as we can during these uh COVID times is of value. And I would appreciate, um, I understand, I appreciate your comments, Nicholas Tark, on um saying that this is probably more of a town council decision, but if we can do that, I think it would be of value to all of us. And I'd like you to strongly consider that or pass it on to the town or tell me how I can encourage the town to do that. Thank you.
Great, thanks. And as a stopgap measure, how about if I just read off the names of the people that are here right now? So that was Barbara Seip. There was the phone number that I think is Carolyn Vertonghen, Allison Wood, um, Betsy Morgenthaller, Bob Turcot, Dana, Christie Corley, Laura Pogren Zelska, Leslie, Marcin Palowski, Mary Hefty, Rita Comas, and Ulrich Aldag. I'm just reading the little name posted across there. Okay, uh, shall we move to staff reports? That you, Laura?
Yes. Um, so the first thing is an important announcement that we already alluded to, and that is the newly winery Bringridge conditional use permit is scheduled for your next meeting on November 3rd. Um, the environmental document, the evaluation of the appropriateness of um an exemption is posted on the website and I'll shortly be emailing the commissioners a link to that. So if you wanted to start reviewing it in advance of the meeting, you'd be able to do that. So um I'll be sending you that information probably tomorrow. And members of the public, um, that is posted on the website now. If you'd like to start reviewing that on the project page, portolavalley.net slash projects and then go to the nearly. And then the other thing I wanted to um preview with you is related to SB nine in particular. Um, so very quickly, um, a lot of legislation that has been passed. Um, SB nine is really getting a lot of the focus in the community, rightly so. SB 10 is something that the council can opt into. It is not a requirement. So I'm not going to talk about that in detail because there's no indication the town will opt into that. But for commissioners and members of the public, we wanted to make sure that people are familiar um with this. And I would give this um very brief presentation with the caveat that the legal interpretations continue to evolve. The legislation is written in such a way that it requires interpretation. And so what I'm going to tell you is the best interpretation um from the attorney's office and my office at this time. Um, but additional information uh could be forthcoming as that continues to evolve. So SB nine has a number of really important provisions for the community. Um, the ones that I think are probably most important are related to lot splits, um, allowing additional units and discretionary review. So we included in the packet the staff report uh from the town attorney and our team to the council as well as the Zoom link. So I would really encourage people, if you're interested in this topic, to look at both things um and watch the portion of the meeting if you're, if you're interested, because there was a lot of discussion and feedback from the council as well. So looking at those three um key components, the way we read the legislation is that it would generally remove discretionary review for projects that are two units or less. And that equates to our subjective process that ASCC conducts um for individual, single-family homes. And so we have significant, um, you know, interest in that. We think that that discretionary process is an important part of upholding the town's values. So we do have some proposed approaches to that and I'll get into that in just a minute. The legislation also allows lot splits and most lots, there are some exceptions. They're really technical. But it would allow many people to be able to divide their property into two approximately equal-sized pieces. And then to be able to develop each of those lots with two units each. So in a situation where right now you have one large property with one single-family home, you could divide that um into two lots and then put two units each for a total of four units. The other general provision is to allow an additional unit, so two units on most single-family lots. Again, there are some technical um exceptions. And so in this situation, the way I've been thinking about it is on an average lot, you would have a main house, um, an ADU and a JADU, a junior ADU. That's what the state law requires right now. SB nine adds an additional unit into that mix that I'm kind of referring to as the SB nine unit. The legislation changed a bit along the course of its development. And so at one point, there were interpretations that it could result in as many as eight times as many units because those units would each have their own ADUs and it could multiply from there. Our interpretation right now is that it would be the four units would be all that would be allowed on a single-family home um that didn't have a lot split. So the main house, the ADU, the SB nine unit, and then a junior ADU would have to be within the main house or the SB nine unit underneath our code. So when you combine the lot split and the main, um, or, or when you look at those two different scenarios, um, it doesn't have as big of a multiplier as some people were um first afraid of. And so the legislation does allow the town to create objective zoning standards. And this is language that is getting much more common in state law. So just to repeat so that everybody knows, objective zoning standards are like a checklist. They're normally numerical. Any reasonable person would reach the same conclusion. So those are things like setback and height um and other things typically related to the building form. Here at my materials, it might be some other design-related things as long as we could quantify them or write them objectively. So we are allowed to write objective zoning standards. And we can limit the size um of these SB nine units as long as we don't physically preclude, that's the language from the law, we don't physically preclude the units being 800 square feet. So this is very similar to the state law requirements for ADUs, where you'll recall that the state law told us we have to allow ADUs of up to 800 square feet. So if we enact that, um, those requirements and put in objective zoning standards, we could effectively, we believe, limit these SB nine units to 800 square feet. So it would be similar to having another ADU on the property. So as you know, the largest properties in town, more than three and a half acres are already allowed to have two ADUs in some circumstances. So in some cases, it's not as bad as it may appear in terms of impact on the community. So what we did was we looked at all of that and thought about what the state law intent was and we presented this um information to the council. And staff has been working on some proposals to try to preserve especially our discretionary review for larger, single-family homes. So we don't think it's the intent of the law to really regulate that. And given the, our context and the property values in the community, I think a reasonable argument can be made that discretionary review of large, single-family homes doesn't meaningfully impact housing production. It's not going to change the housing crisis, um, you know, our discretionary review of, of large, single-family homes. And we want to retain that because of our town values and rural character. Um, and we also want to retain that because it gives us an opportunity to limit environmental and safety considerations that are evaluated on a case-by-case basis. So we think that this is an important thing to try to preserve that local authority over our discretionary review. So what we're proposing, um, and the council asked us to go forward with is to create zoning regulations that would allow two units of up to 800 square feet, um, the number from the state law on every lot in the single-family zoning districts. And then we would create objective standards to regulate those units, the building envelope and the form. And fire safety. And we think we could integrate fire safety um elements there as well. And those units would have to go through a ministerial process. So they would only get a building permit. They would not go to ASCC. And then we, we plan and propose to maintain our discretionary process for regular, large, single-family homes. So that's what we presented to the council um on the 13th. So the council asked us to proceed with developing an emergency ordinance uh for the council's consideration. And they appointed a subcommittee of the mayor and the vice mayor to work with the town attorney and staff to develop this ordinance so that we could have it adopted on December 8th and have it go into effect when the legislation goes into effect at the beginning of January. Um, something that I think the planning commission will be very interested in, the state law also includes requirements for forfeit setbacks similar to the ADU legislation that you were just dealing with um earlier this year. So we're continuing to think about that. We learned a lot from the planning commission's discussion around the incentives and disincentives um aspects of trying to mitigate that. And we're doing really a lot of work around the fire safety and geologic aspects of this. This law is written differently than the ADU law. So um Cara, you know, the town attorney and other attorneys are really getting into this exception language to understand what that means. So it will take, I think, a little bit different form than the ADU um ordinance that, that you all crafted. But I think it will have similarities um from that experience and what we learned through that. So um it's a complex topic. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you may have, but I may not be able to answer detailed questions, but we'd be happy to take those down and get back to you um if you have questions.
And Laura, this is going straight to the council on December 8th or it swings through the planning commission?
It'll go straight to the town council. Given the um timeframe of it, I think we're gonna have to do that in order to have something in place. And we recognize that it'll probably need some fine tuning. We really need something in place because we, this is not a law that we want to go without our own local implementing ordinance. Um, and then if there's aspects of that that need further refinement and development, then those would. then those would go through a planning commission process.
And if the meeting's on December 8th, it can still be in effect by, I think it was January 1st. It didn't need a full, a lot of things I see voted on don't go into effect for a month or something.
Yes, I don't want to misspeak, but there's a process to adopt an emergency ordinance that is for certain circumstances. And adoption of an ordinance to comply with state law would typically fall within that, and the council would have to make findings in order to do so.
Got it. Thank you.
Is this an approach that other municipalities are taking?
Not to my knowledge.
So we're proceeding on our own, then?
We may be. We're still, you know, communicating with our colleagues, and we'll continue to communicate with the council subcommittee. But what we heard is a preliminary feedback from the council was to do what we can and be creative, be willing to take a chance.
Are we communicating with HCD?
Not yet.
Will we be performing any kind of sequen analysis with respect to the ordinance?
I do not know yet.
Thank you.
Great. Is that everything on the staff report, Laura? Thank you.
Yeah, that's everything.
Okay. Shall we move on to approval of the minutes of the last meeting from October 6th?
You should take public comments on this.
Okay, good. Oh, good. So any public comments on the staff report? Do see some, just a moment. Okay. Go ahead.
Yep.
I really appreciate that very enlightening report, Laura. The, it does underline the role of WASC, things as you're talking about mostly woodside properties that you're now defending. I do, sweetheart, I'm just talking for a sec. We must tell you that she's very lovely. And that I think it would be good, thank you Nicholas, for pointing out that we need to review how the staff communicates back to Westridge, and we communicate to the town. This will be really important for us. And I wanted to just respond to the question of whether we exist or not. We do exist. And we, but we exist in a slightly different format, which is not a homeowners association per se. It's an architectural review. And our obligation is to our community directly in terms of the agreements that we have with them directly, in terms of codes, covenants, and restrictions. So I just think it'll be very interesting to see how this plays out. And we're looking forward to working closely with the town and understanding what the relationship is going to be between the HOAs and the non-HOAs. The organizations that predated the town will relate to these ordinances. I think we're all going to learn a lot. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Next, Bob Turcot.
Thank you. I applaud, I applaud the staff for that, compiling and synthesizing that complex material. I've got two concerns about the staff report, and these issues weren't really brought out in the oral presentation that just happens. They're more, I see them in the written report dated October 13th. One is that the report acknowledges that SB9 provides language for exclusion of areas as needed for public safety, but it doesn't elaborate on what is required to implement that. And the second is it presents staff's conclusion that SB9 is unlikely to lead to much development in Portola Valley. There's no analysis or data provided. So really, that's speculation. It's speculation that doesn't ring true. Certainly, as someone who's very concerned about wildfire safety and understands the data that shows that adding new structures to hazardous areas, it clearly intensifies a fire and makes it worse and leads directly to the, you know, extensive destruction that we've seen. Even for someone like me, I look at half my lot and feel very compelling financial incentives. So I think you're going to see a flurry of lot splits. And where they're, you know, where we're zoned for a single-family structure, we'll have four. The, I think there's a false belief that the ADU-restricted area that Portola Valley has represents the extent of our hazard. The many maps that we have, Moritz, the CAL FIRE map, show 61% of the area, either high or very high hazard. Woodside Fire Protection District's analysis, it shows four very high fire hazard severity zones in town. And insurance data. The epidemic of insurance loss that we're all aware of speaks to the hazard that extensively exists beyond the ADU-restricted area. So this mechanism that is in the bill should be explored and developed. The town should exercise the authority and responsibility that the legislature recognizes and defers to. What is required by SB9, and this is not articulated in the staff report, is there needs to be an objective written criteria by which the safety of a proposal can be evaluated. And there are already existing documents that do that. NFPA 1140 is a standard that will allow the evaluation for safety. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with respect to safety. I think that we need to exercise the authority and responsibility for protecting public safety. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Next up is Christie.
Thank you. Thanks for presenting SB9, and I'd like to hear more on SB10. As you know, Portola Valley cares about the environment and nature and green spaces. I urge you to please consider the environment when you are doing your ordinances. So the way I see SB9 can wipe away SEQA and environmental concerns. And I feel that Portola Valley, of all cities in San Mateo County, which how many cities there are, 19, 20? We have beautiful green spaces, and I hate to see this wiped away. I urge you to build something into your ordinance that preserves the environment as much as possible. I also urge you to consider using an authority land use lawyer that can come up with different ordinance options. I would love to see option one, two, and three rather than just one. So I think with creativity, we can think about more options. I also know that Woodside divides its city into three sections depending on its lot size. And then they allow ADUs to have different setbacks if they're in the glens versus many, many acres. And what, you know, if you had a very large acre or two or three or four, whatever, you don't want to put it four, you don't want to put an ADU four feet from the corner from the closest neighbor. So we really do need to possibly look at what Woodside's done with their different sectioning of their town. I urge you to go research different communities with larger and small properties to see what they've done even with ADU setbacks on the side and back of four feet. I just think, I think the glens is five feet. So I think we need to be looking into that. And I'm, I'm, you call it a number four SB9 unit. And I'm just wondering why it's called that. I think what you're trying to do is a second ADU of 800 square feet. So why 800? Why not 500? I mean, how big, it depends on the lot size. To me, it would be lot size and then what you can put on it. So, and you have the authority to do whatever you want. You can keep this town, you know, looking like it does without getting huge. And I just, I'd like to see an A, B, or C for an ordinance and let the people weigh in. Because we moved here for this wonderful environment, and we voted you in to protect this wonderful environment. And I just urge you to look at that. Now, I didn't hear much about SB10. And I'd like it described for the residents that SB10 is putting 10 units on a lot. If that law put 11 units on a lot, it would require SEQA. So the reason they kept it at 10 is because they don't have to do SEQA. So I'm not sure SEQA should always be wiped out, especially in this town. So an SB10 can put 10 units on a lot, plus two ADUs, plus two junior ADUs. You're at 14 units on a lot. You're saying you're not going to use SB10, but I guess my question is, if not, put it in writing. What, you know, just verbally, I guess if you put things in writing, I'm going to believe you. If it's verbal, you can do anything you want in the future. So, and maybe there are places to do this, but I'm telling you, when a house gets wiped down and somebody, developer comes in and puts on 14 units next door to your house, and you don't know it till the bulldozer comes, that's going to be scary to some of our residents that thought they were buying in a nice, peaceful and nature community that they love. So we don't want surprises. We want to know. And I don't think the residents understand ministerial means that the public is not notified at all. And it's done by over-the-counter and done. There's nothing you can do about it after. So how can you protect and at least write into an ordinance that you have to let your neighbors know? That would be what I request. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Christie. Um, let's see, anybody else? Okay, shall we go on to the minutes of October 6th meeting?
Yeah, I just have a quick point, and that is, Laura, I don't believe that the planning commission has any jurisdiction or authority about the adoption of either of SB10. Is that correct? And the reason why I raise the issue is that points that were raised are important issues. But I think that if, if people have concerns, then they need to be speaking to the correct body. And that would not be the planning commission, so far as I know.
I agree. That's not an issue for the planning commission. The town council would have to direct staff to pursue implementing SB10 provisions, which would take a tremendous amount of writing of new regulations, what would have to be considered. So the councils expressed no interest in doing that. So that is their statement to say that they don't intend to do that. And so the planning commission has no further role in that.
And if the council were to move forward with the implementation of SB10, that would require, what? That would require an ordinance to be.
I would expect it would require an ordinance, an amendment to the zoning code, which would be heard through public hearings by the planning commission and the council, very large, extensive process if they wish to do that.
So again, I only urge that, and I only bring these up not to limit debate or discussion, but this body simply doesn't have jurisdiction to take action, one way or the other, on these important issues. And I would urge the participants who are raising these to raise it with council as appropriate, or individual members at the council or with town staff who can raise it with the council. This body doesn't have that authority. And it's interesting, it's important, but in a certain sense, you're speaking to the wrong people on this, on this body if the expectation is that we'll be able to affect change. So I, again, it's important. I just urge that we get it to the people who can address it.
Okay, thanks. We are on to the minutes from October 6th. Nicholas and Judith, do you have comments to make?
I have no comments.
I just have one, and it is on red page 71, middle of the page. It says Assistant Planner Parker shared the history. The second sentence there, I would just ask that staff go back and confirm the accuracy because I don't remember the commission determining that the original intent is not the only way to interpret the town's underground policy. I, I thought we were looking to counsel with SEL there to help us understand what our analysis needed to integrate. So if you just go back and make sure it's accurate for what was actually said, that's all I ask.
Okay, thanks. And I have no comments to make, so. Laura, now we take public comments on the minutes.
Yes.
Yeah, great. Okay, so public comments on the, these are on the minutes of October 6th.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had my hand up for the previous issue, so I'm sorry. I lowered my hand. I don't know why.
All right, thanks. That's okay. Let's see, I don't see any other comments on it. So shall we have a motion to accept the minutes?
So move.
Can I second?
Okay, great. Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote, I guess.
Commissioner Tark?
Aye.
Commissioner Haskell?
Aye.
Vice Chair Popson?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, accepted the minutes. Good, and let me zoom back to the agenda. Oops, can't get there very fast. But I think we're done. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thanks, everyone. So I guess we'll see everybody, is it two weeks? That's the November 3rd meeting?
November 3rd meeting.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone. Good night.